...chunk to swallow. That's where I'm coming from. From an accounting standpoint, for somebody who did auditing, I'm, I just, I just continue to shake my head. Never seen anything like this in twenty-some years that I did this kind of work, never. So, we got one more meeting before the end of the year. We got town meeting coming up next Monday night. You have to be told about it. You have to be aware of it because we've got to deal with it. And when I say "we," I mean the town of Dayton. Because, folks, we all put money into this pot and it's not going to be collected. And I certainly don't want to give anybody the impression who uses ambulance service that if you have a run and we provide what we provide and you refuse to pay, going forward, folks, I think you need to be aware the town will take action to collect the money. We will not deny anyone's services, but this, this, this is not going to continue. It's just not going to continue.
I'd just like to say also that I'd say fifty percent of my focus is on figuring out what happened. The other fifty percent is going to be put into making sure that it doesn't happen again. Because I'm sure all of you watching this are wondering how every ten years we can afford to spend three hundred thirteen thousand dollars on accounts receivable write-offs. I'm in the same boat and all I can say is going forward, it won't be happening again. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Martin, I just want to have one thing that maybe you could explain to me. This is the first time I saw one of these. This is a summary of payments received after the patient was sent to FFR. How, how does this work? This was a run back in two thousand nine that the FFR payment was six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Now, this was sent to the Dayton, well, to Dayton, six dollars and sixty-seven cents. How does that work? Out of a total of four hundred, the bill was four hundred and thirty-five dollars. How would that come about?
Repeat that thing, that went to FFR?
Summary of payments received after the patient was sent to FFR.
No, it was from the no-fee payments this month.
This was the...
So, that was, that was received before it got sent to the collections company?
No, this was the no-fee thing from FFR.
This posting date was five fourteen two thousand sixteen. They received a payment of six dollars and, well, no, they're paying us a payment of six dollars and sixty-seven cents out of a bill of four hundred and thirty-five dollars. I just, how does that work?
They received a payment of ten dollars, we got six sixty-seven.
Is it a ten-dollar payment?
What's the point in sending it to FFR?
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
And there's no indication that they set up a ten-dollar-a-week or ten-dollar-a-month payment plan?
I don't know. The bill, the bill that was owed was four hundred and thirty-five dollars. FFR collected six dollars and sixes seven cents that they sent to us. They might have collected more.
Is that, is that the balance due or just the total, the total amount?
Your mouth, your mouth.
Total amount of the original debt?
Yeah, they sent six sixty-seven and then on the other...
So, this, this patient is sending ten dollars a month?
So, they got to tell you ten dollars.
Uh, general, generally, FFR...
As far as, well, it was almost ten dollars.
Thirty-three percent.
But if it was four hundred?
Right. They only collected ten dollars. They kept it three thirty-three and they sent us six sixty-seven. And they keep thirty-three percent.
Wait, hold on, hold on. So, Jen, this whole time I'm thinking that the thirty-three percent that comes, I'll just use ComStar as an example, that they were, let's say it was a hundred dollars that was due. They were charging the person a hundred thirty-three dollars to get their thirty-three percent and then the hundred dollars goes to the town of Dayton to pay for the services rendered. So, now that our town accountant, which thank you, by the way, has revealed this information to me, my question is, so, in this scenario, you, I owe a hundred dollars. You take thirty dollars. It's really thirty-three. Let's just say thirty for the sake of math.
I don't take thirty dollars. My fee is much lower.
Four percent.
Four percent. So, FFR, excuse me, FFR takes thirty percent.
Yes.
What happens, and, and then you put seventy dollars down on the balance that's owed, but there was a hundred dollars that was owed to the town of Dayton?
The accounting transaction will be, uh, the receivables, if a patient pays a hundred dollars, the receivable reduced by a hundred dollars. That is a credit. The debit side is two pieces. One is cash for the sixty-six dollars and change and the other is an expense, the FFR fee.
That's on your allowance as it shows what the FFR gets.
So, if you were journalizing that, you'd have a credit to your accounts receivable, a debit to expense, and a debit to cash, and those two, the debits and credits were balanced.
I, I gotta be honest, I still don't understand. Maybe I, I feel like I'm good in math. I took up to calculus three in college. I don't understand, I owe a hundred dollars. You take, not you, excuse me, FFR takes thirty, so there's seventy dollars left. So, what happens, but I owed a hundred, so where's this other thirty dollars that you took, that FFR took, excuse me? Where, where does that go? I don't understand it.
They keep it.
It's their fee. That's their fee.
They charge thirty-three percent.
But isn't there still, but we still, we're, I still owed a hundred?
Well, that's like a settlement. Patient, the patient paid a hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So, the patient's good. Their account's been paid. However, the town doesn't get the full hundred in cash.
Okay, so my question is then...
Seventy in cash and then you go to expense.
Great, so I am correct. So, then who, does the town of Dayton write off that thirty percent that we were unable to collect?
It's an expense.
It's, but...
It's an expense.
But the rest of your answer is, we need a complete statement showing what was billed and what was paid and who got what. Because if all she has is the sixty, seventy dollars receivable, in her records, there's still thirty dollars out there. Now, is she supposed to assume?
That's part of the allowances we call FFR.
This one here.
Yeah, they're...
It's at the very bottom, which is part of the general entry I do every month.
Your accountant does get the full set of transactions, so it balances. So, she relieves the receivable for a hundred dollars. She credits her cash account for seventy.
This one...
And then she has an expense account she'll hit for thirty dollars, which is the FFR fee.
There's one another.
So, it does balance.
July twenty-third, two oh one-two, incident twelve three one seven. All right, that's on the list. Total charges were twenty-one, twenty-two point fifty-four. That's the amount allowed. There was sixteen hundred and four dollars and forty cents paid. There was an amount due of five hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents. Well, of the five hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents, they, um, looks like the town got sixty-six, sixty-seven, which means they only collected a hundred dollars. Where's the four eighteen fourteen? Where's that? How do we know, are they still trying to collect it? Did they set up a payment plan?
FFR would have documented it.
Well, that's my question.
What, what was the date of that, Nancy?
I have no idea what FFR, again, tell people we get any reports back from FFR.
That's what I'm saying.
He has no idea where any of these runs are sitting as far as...
So, that's what I need, like Brett said, is by moving forward to see which one can be, could be written off or which one they're still actively, they might be getting a little bit of money or how, what the, what stuff, where they're, where they're at, at the process.
Is it, can I ask you a question about that, Tony? Is it possible that FFR has already decided that this one from November fifteenth, two thousand five, needs to be written off, but we just didn't know and we didn't do anything about it?
They could have. I mean, that's something that I...
So, who would they be telling that information to? That we're done, it's been eleven years, it's not going to happen, we're not getting the money?
They haven't said it to anybody. That's what I'm saying. We have, I'll have to put something in place to make sure when they get to, was it six or eight letters there that they possibly could use to say, we've, we've gone through that many steps if that's what...
I don't think they send out six or eight letters.
No, I'm saying of those six or eight letters that they, I gave him before, that First Financial Resources uses, of those letters, when they're done with their procedures, that they're done and then the town has to make a decision of what they want to do.
I'm just confused as to what you mean by the policy. Do you mean the policy should be that FFR's, do you mean that the policy should be FFR sends us monthly reports or should the policy be that you should be routinely checking in with FFR?
The policy is something that has to be developed in this town that's acceptable to everyone who's involved with it, okay? From the fire chief to the board of selectmen to the accounting officer, and if in fact, after ComStar is through, if they're still doing this service, providing this service, the question is whether or not it goes any further or whether it comes back to this town as part of the policy. Because at that point in time, there has to be additional information about, at what point do we get the tax collector involved and at what point do we, how do we weed these things out if we're going to take them to small claims court? But dealing with this whole list right now, we're coming up on a fiscal closing. I'll go back to what Rick said over an hour ago. You've got to write off the ones that have gone to FFR. And if they do collect some money down the road, they've got to give you the information you need to identify them, but for all intent, in purpose, kiss this money goodbye, you're going to have to write it off. He said his clients do not let these things run for ten years, even without a policy. Common sense, good accounting principles, which were developed by others than us, we're all familiar with those. Good accounting policy says you could, you gotta write them off, folks. And that's what taxpayers have to understand. This is what we're looking at as a write-off. A write-off means ninety-nine percent chance the town will never see this money. And on the one percent chance that we collect and maybe we get more than one percent back, we can say, thank goodness, but for the most part, kiss it goodbye because it's not coming in. It's too old. You couldn't even take these to small claims court. You'd be tossed out to, get out of here, your time, bud, go away.
As far as Nancy, on that, that big spreadsheet you have there, I had Rick break down some of these that are still active at ComStar that they're still trying. So, that, that number that you had there, it's, it's a little bit less, not a whole heck of a lot less, it's still eighty-some thousand that they're still working on trying to, they're trying to get. Right here, there's, that's what you asked me the other day, which ones are active at ComStar, which ones are active at, at FFR?
Rick, is your experience that a hundred and twenty days, if after a hundred and twenty days, they haven't responded to three bills in your letter, there's a good chance you'd need to put it on the write-off list?
I think from a valuation standpoint, that, that's appropriate.
A hundred and twenty days, so what I'm...
Doesn't mean you can't take more steps after that.
Correct.
But I think from a valuation standpoint, that's, that's a good conservative thing to do.
To have accurate and truthful financial statements, write it off.
Yeah.
Better to have some money come in and classify it as one of those things, but...
Exactly, I agree, yeah.
This is a hundred and twenty days, three hundred and thirteen thousand, seven thirty-six, thirty-two. That's a hundred and twenty days. That's what we're looking at for a write-off.
Um, I just have a question. On the, on the most recent ComStar report, we still have over twenty-six thousand dollars that's over a year old at ComStar, going back to April of fourteen. So, why isn't your opinion that things over a hundred and twenty days uncollectible, but you're still holding on to them?
We'd have to look at each individual accountant, I could tell you. There's, there's no general statement to that. I mean, we, we're not holding on to them. There's, there's some practical reason why it's not appropriate to put it on the request for disposition report, yet it could be in litigation. And if we get notified by an attorney, then we basically have to put it on hold. We check with the attorney periodically. There's, there's any number of reasons why that could be the case, but we could go...
It could be an estate that hasn't settled.
There's any number of reasons why...
How many accounts is it?
You know, we're not going to put it on that report till we feel there's, we've exhausted all our steps. And that's, you know, there's going to be...
Jen, I'm not making excuses, but one possibility is it's an estate claim.
Yes.
And the estate hasn't settled, but you need to know that.
Right.
All of that twenty-six thousand needs to be broken down with a reason for each one, like estate settlement in process or litigation against this estate. So, they're not ready to give up on it yet, so at least you have an idea what it is, but without, again, without having that information, you know? And quite frankly, if you write the twenty-six thousand off and collection is made, the explanation with the check would say that estate finally settled. So, even you, though you've written off the twenty-six, you have, still have auditable information on what is this receivable for? Oh, it was...
If it did come back in like that, we would reinstate the receivable, which is another transaction that would show it coming back onto the aging and then we would not get paid.
With the payment against it, so that's what she would have.
So, you'd have a complete, everything that we do, there's a complete audit trail of, from a posting standpoint, of what happened. It traces right back to the original patient care report through, through reference to the incident numbers.
Mr. Martin, do you still stand by the statement you made, or Tony had relayed to us after Nancy and Mrs. Goulet had asked him a few questions, that you strongly recommend that any run previous to January first, two thousand sixteen, needs to be written off?
Hmm, I, I don't, I'm not going to use a date. You gotta, you gotta, the, the reports that have put it into the request for disposition status, that's, those are the ones, so...
Well, a hundred and twenty days old or older.
I think that's a little aggressive, but you can do that. I mean, that's, that's fine.
Well, the only reason is that our account brought up...
I mean, that's, that's a little overly conservative, but, um, again, you can establish any policy you want.
I'm only talking about what you said several times tonight. A hundred and twenty days or older.
I never, I did not say a hundred and twenty days or older. I said, when we put it on the request for disposition report and I gave you a range of time where it could take, if you look at all the potential scenarios, it could go beyond one twenty, a hundred and twenty days. So, I think that would be a little premature if you did that across the board.
Except, but in the twenty-six thousand dollar question she just asked, I said, it would probably be wise to write those off because then you explain to me if you get a payment, because it's an estate settlement that took two or three years, you reinstate it. She gets notified, by the way, this receivable, we now have this receivable back again for X dollars and here's the payment to cover it. So, that's how it goes through yours, this is how it goes through hers.
If you, if you want to establish that policy, we can help administer that, certainly.
No, I'm just saying what you said a few minutes ago in response to your twenty-six thousand dollar question. That's all I'm saying.
And do we know how many accounts that, that adds up to the twenty-six thousand? Just for, no problem.
Well, getting back to what I just asked, this email was sent to us early, early April that you had recommended that anything previous to January first needs to be written off. Seems like an awful short span. You're talking three and a half months. If that word got out and somebody had a balance due on an ambulance that they just took the ride three months before, what incentive is there to pay it? Why pay it if we're going to write it off?
I, I don't, that doesn't make any sense to me. Did I put the wrong year on it?
No, this came from Tony when he talked to you. The owner told him anything previous January first that needs to be written, written off.
January first of?
Two thousand sixteen.
No, that, that's...
Unless it wasn't, it was a mistake.
That, that doesn't...
Because I just said, I just showed, I just had the ones that...
That doesn't ring true, I mean, that's not, that's not how things are flowing to you.
No, that's not what you were saying.
No, that's not a hundred and twenty days either.
No, that's, that was a mistake.
I, I would, I think if you want to make some general policies, that's great, but you don't want to set policy that ignores the detail and what it's telling you. So, there's a fair amount of information we can provide, you know? You establish your policy or at least put together a framework and then we can deliver the reporting to help you administer it. And it, I, I personally, I hate set-it-and-forget-it policies because there's always going to be a thoughtful, does this make sense assessment to everything? So, that's why I shy away from blanket rules without some oversight and some checking and, you know, whether, you know, just to make sure, this is general work.
For a policy, for a kind of a policy to work, not a procedure, a policy to work, it has to be flexible.
Mm-hmm.
Without mentioning names, in Bristol County, roughly, how many fire departments use your service? Ten, twenty, five, three, two?
I guess, off the top of my head, I'd say twenty. I, I'm not real great on the...
No, that's okay. That's okay.
On the county map and how...
Are you outside of, are you out, Bristol County? So, are you in, are you in any other states?
Yes, we are in all the New England states, New York and North Carolina. Of our two hundred and plus clients, over a hundred and ten of them are in Massachusetts.
And you're, are you kind of boundary to boundary across the state?
We're all over the state, from western Mass, down the Cape. We have a good group of clients in the Cape and Island area, around here, central Mass, the North Shore, Essex County, Middlesex County. It's really quite diverse. Nice thing is with electronic data these days, we can work in any state in the country, but really, we, we're New England from. We're, Massachusetts dominates our, our coverage. I lived in Massachusetts all my life.
So, Dean, you want to set up a meeting or go over which ones that are, are done to review them, to make a determination of what you, how you want to go forward with them?
It's not determined.
It's not FFR determined.
What I'm saying is, do you want to, do you want to go over the, the later ones that go through them as far as FFR, get a determination of where they are at with them? And then we'll sit down and with, with Jen and the board and go over them and that way you can disposition them to write off if that's what the board wants to do?
This, there's a disconnect here, Tony. This is totally your responsibility. We are coming up on a fiscal closing, June thirtieth. We have been discussing this tonight, whether we go with a hundred and twenty days or go whatever.
Can I make a suggestion?
We need to act on this list. And if your decision is, after you talk to Rick or whatever, your decision is write off, board of selectmen in writing, you write off all of the things on this list, beginning with date such and such and ending with date such and such. It might be the whole list. It may start somewhere along in fifteen, fourteen, whatever. That's the first thing that has to be done. After that's done, and that comes before this board, and this board figures out with your recommendation, if the board says, we're going to vote to take this action and write it off, it goes off to Jen. The next step is you draft a policy. Contact, talk to Rick, contact your fellow fire chiefs, whatever, get policies. He's got clients, fire departments, that he says do not have old ARs like we have. So, he can tell you who those chiefs are. Talk to chief so-and-so over here and up. So, that tells me out there, there are effective policies that work. Get some policies, put together, pick and choose the best stuff. You might find one that's excellent. Get us a draft policy. At that point, we'd sit down and talk. Right now, the main thing we need to do, what we need from you is tell us what to do with this list. And we got to do this before that fiscal closing.
We can, we can work on that, yep.
We're going to meet again on the twenty-second. I know it's, it's short, it's, you know, a couple of weeks, but we get that closing coming up. This can't go into the new fiscal year. I can, I mean, because...
I'll work, I know what's reckoned. I'll get the, the stuff to Jen, that way we can...
Oh, you're going to get to the board so they can...
Well, I'm saying, I'll, I'll try, I'll keep you in the, the scope of the whole thing.
Can I ask one more question on your reports?
Yes.
This, the payment summary list?
Yes.
One I just received is fourteen different entries, the same run. You have a negative amount and a positive amount. So, we received zero fourteen different times on this report, several thousand dollars.
For better for worse, you see every keystroke my, my billers make. And if, if they entered something in error, it's going to go on and off the report. That's all I can say. It's, you see, you see...
We're going to remind you of the last money. We're going to remind you of the last money. It's like, what is this?
No, it is, it, it's, it sounds to me like someone entered something and realized they made a mistake and reversed it. And the better for worse, you see every transaction that my, my team does. My policy is as long as we catch those matters before the final reports are issued, we are good. And then we work on, obviously, that's, we wasted some time, but that's my issue to work with my managers on the, the productivity and the efficiency, but as long as it's active before leaves, I'm not going to chop anybody's head off. And, and that way, they're going to tell me, hey, yes, Rick, we made a mistake here, we got to fix this. Good, fix it. You will see that activity. That sounds like, when you see something, mass going in and out, that means someone put something in wrong and had to reverse it.
It's like you just see...
Do you do billing other than ambulance?
That what, uh, excuse me?
Do you do billing other than ambulance?
No.
You don't do medical billing?
No, we are exclusively working with cities and towns that run their own nine-one-one emergency service. It's a little niche, but that's what we do. We, we try to be real good at it.
Do you do billing for any private companies or only municipalities? You know, like this AMR or this?
Most private, any ambulance services have their own billing department, so the answer is no. We do have one for profit. It's a large facility in Boston that we, they, but it's more non-emergency transfer work.
Oh, like nursing homes to apartments?
Exactly.
Oh, okay.
That's a unique account for us. Again, the other, our, our, we tailor our services for cities and towns and emergency services and, and so forth.
What do you say? Rick, I really appreciate you coming in and spending the time with us.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you folks. And I will work with Tony and we will put together a coherent policy for your, for your consideration.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. We have free time.
Put the cat out. Put the cat out.
Doesn't matter, might be too late.
Hey, the next thing we're going to do is read the warrant, the annual town meeting.
I saw that. I saw that.
Well, we won't have any public input because everyone's gone.
Sleeping, not just gone.
Somebody left a jacket.
Kenny Pacheco.
Oh, he's somewhere, okay.
Next on the agenda, review, discuss, enact, to read the final warrant for the annual town meeting.
I got a whole envelope here.
We won't have this one. Oh, boy. I'm going to read all this, the budget.
Yeah, I was just going to ask about that, how that started.
Right, Nancy. We have to read it.
Um, what did David say about what was in the paper? I think we, if we could, if, you want to explain that? If we had been allowed to revise what was going in the paper, we would not have had to print every line in every bylaw. Isn't that correct?
We could have meant the wording of the bylaws. And substitute it with see full text at Clark's office.
Oh, oh, that's a problem. Yeah, I think we got to read it.
All right. I'll take the first five pages. Town of Dayton, annual town meeting warrant, date June thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, with finance committee recommendations in the county of Bristol to either the constables of the town of Dayton and the county of Bristol. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Dayton qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Dayton Rehoboth Regional High School auditorium on Monday, the thirteenth day of June at seven PM. Then and there to act on the following articles, viz. Article one, to hear a report of the town affairs communications committee and act thereon. Article two, to hear reports of the town officials and act thereon. Article three, to authorize the board of selectmen to appoint all necessary town officials and town committees not otherwise provided for by statute or act thereon. Article four, to hear the report of the capital outlay committee. Article five, to see if the town will establish the position of town administrator... Article five, to see if the town will establish the position of town administrator by adding to article four of the general bylaws, section three, the Board of Selectmen shall have the power to appoint, in accordance with the provisions of chapter forty-one, section twenty-three-eight of the general laws, a town administrator. Article six, to see if the town will raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund the personal, personnel or a town administrator budget and to fund a sum of money for the expenses to be incurred by the town administrator budget. Article seven, to act relative to establishing the salaries of elected town officials for fiscal year two thousand seventeen, in accordance with the provisions of section one oh eight of chapter forty-one of the general laws or act thereon. Board of Assessors, Chairman, seventy-six thousand, eight hundred fifty-five dollars, forty-eight cents. Members, of which there are two, each five thousand, seventy-two dollars, eighty-seven cents, for a total of eighty-seven thousand, one dollar and twenty-two cents. Board of Selectmen, Chairman, nine thousand, five hundred thirty-two. Member, nine thousand, five hundred thirty-two. Member, nine thousand, five hundred thirty-two. Total, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars and ninety-six cents. The tree warden, two four, two hundred forty-three dollars, seventy-four cents. Moderator, five hundred fifty-one dollars, thirty-nine cents. Town clerk, seventy-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars, eighty cents. Town collector, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars, ninety cents. Town treasurer, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred eighty-two dollars, ninety cents. Planning Board Chairman, two thousand, eight hundred seventy-six dollars, sixteen cents. Members, which there are four, each will get one thousand, nine hundred eighteen dollars, twenty-five cents, for a total of ten thousand, five hundred forty-nine dollars, sixteen cents. Sewer Commissioners, Chairman, three thousand, three hundred seventy-three dollars, fifty-five cents. Members, of which there's two, each will get two thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars, eighteen cents, for a total of seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars, ninety-one cents, recommended by the finance committee. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation and/or transfer from available funds the appropriation necessary to defray town charges and assessments as considered by the finance committee or act thereon. Town of Dayton budget for fiscal year two thousand seventeen. Uh, department number one thirteen, town meetings, personnel expenses, current fiscal year, seven hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen requests, eight hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, eight hundred dollars. Expenses, current fiscal year, twelve hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, twelve hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, twelve hundred dollars. Total appropriation for the current fiscal year, nineteen hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, two thousand dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee is the two thousand dollars. Department number fourteen, moderator, personnel expenses, current fiscal year, five hundred forty dollars, fifty-eight cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, five hundred fifty-one dollars, thirty-nine cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by finance committee, five hundred fifty-one dollars, thirty-nine cents. The total appropriation, fiscal year current, five hundred forty dollars, fifty-eight cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, five hundred fifty-one thirty-nine. And fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, five hundred fifty-one dollars, thirty-nine cents. Uh, department number one twenty-two, Board of Selectmen, personnel expenses, current fiscal year, one thousand, one hundred thousand, six hundred seventy dollars, seventy-one cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one hundred three thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars, ninety-six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, one hundred three thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars, ninety-six cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, seventy-four thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars, fifty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, seventy-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, seventy-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, one hundred seventy-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-five dollars, twenty-one cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one hundred seventy-nine thousand, four hundred one dollar, ninety-six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, one hundred seventy-nine thousand, four hundred one dollars, ninety-six cents. Department number one twenty-four, town administrator, uh, refer two thousand seventeen annual town meeting warrant, article six above. I don't know how that reads.
It's just an amount, they didn't specify the dollars. I think the dollars are in the motion, aren't they? It's not on the warrant article, so it's, yeah.
The article, okay. Department number one thirty-one, finance committee, personnel expenses, current fiscal year, three thousand, seven hundred, one dollar. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, three thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, three thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars. Expenses, current fiscal year, seven hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, seven hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, seven hundred dollars. Total appropriation, four thousand, four hundred one dollars for the current fiscal year, the two thousand seventeen request, uh, two thousand seventeen fiscal year request is four thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, four thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars. Department number one thirty-two, Reserve of Fund, expenses, thirty-one thousand, two hundred seven dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, fifty thousand dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, fifty thousand dollars. Total appropriation for this current fiscal year, thirty-one thousand, two hundred seven dollars. The fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, fifty thousand dollars. And the fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee of fi- of fif- fifty thousand dollars. These numbers are starting to run together. Department one thirty-five, Town Accountant, personnel expenses, one hundred eighteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars for the current fiscal year, two thousand seventeen request, uh, two thousand seventeen fiscal year request is one hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars, eighty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee is one twenty-two, one hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars, eighty cents. Expenses, for current fiscal year, seven thousand, two hundred fifty dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, four thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars. And the fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee of four thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars. For a total appropriation of current fiscal year was one hundred twenty-six thousand, twenty-five dollars. Physical year two thousand seventeen request, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, twelve dollars, eighty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, twelve dollars, eighty cents. Department number one forty-one, the Board of Assessors, personnel expenses, current fiscal year, one hundred fifty-six thousand, twenty-seven dollars, forty-six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, eighty-three dollars, ninety-three cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, eighty-three dollars, ninety-three cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, twelve thousand, two hundred forty dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, eleven thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, eleven thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred sixty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars, ninety-three cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-three cents. Department one forty-five, Town Treasurer, personnel expenses, sixty-nine thousand for the current fiscal year, sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars, nineteen cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, seventy-four thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars, fifty-five cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, seventy-four thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars, fifty-five cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, thirty-two thousand, four hundred. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, thirty-two thousand, five hundred. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Total appropriation for the current fiscal year was one hundred two thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars, nineteen cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one hundred six thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, fifty-five cents. And fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, one hundred six thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, fifty-five cents. Department number one forty-six, Town Collector, personnel expenses, current fiscal year, seventy-one thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars, nineteen cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, seventy-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, fifty-five cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, seventy-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars, fifty-five cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, nineteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, twenty thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, twenty thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars. Total appropriation for the current fiscal year, ninety thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars, nineteen cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, ninety-six thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars, fifty-five cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, ninety-six thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars, fifty-five cents. Department one fifty-one, Town Council, expenses, current fiscal year, one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, forty thousand. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, forty thousand dollars. Department one fifty-five, Data Processing, expenses, forty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars, seventy-six cents for the current fiscal year. The fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, forty thousand, one hundred fifty dollars, five cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, forty thousand, one hundred fifty dollars, five cents. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, forty-one thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars, seventy-six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, forty thousand, one hundred fifty dollars, five cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, forty thousand, one hundred fifty dollars, five cents. Department one fifty-eight, Tax Title Foreclosure, expenses for the current fiscal year, nineteen thousand dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, nineteen thousand. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, nineteen thousand. Total appropriation for current fiscal year, the request for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen and the recommendation by the finance committee is nineteen thousand dollars each. Department number one sixty-one, Town Clerk, Personnel Expenses, current fiscal year, one hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars, fifty-six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars and seventy cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by finance committee, one hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars, seventy cents. Expenses for the current fiscal year, four thousand, two hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, four thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, four thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars, fifty-six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars, seventy cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, one hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars, seventy cents. Department number one sixty-two, Elections, Personnel Expenses, current fiscal year, seven thousand, three hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, ten thousand, three hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, ten thousand, three hundred dollars. Expenses, current fiscal year, seventeen thousand, two hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, twenty thousand, fifty dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, twenty thousand, fifty dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, thirty thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, thirty thousand, three hundred fifty dollars. Department number one sixty-three, Registration, Personnel Expenses, current fiscal year, six hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, six hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, six hundred dollars. Expenses for the current fiscal year, three thousand, six hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, thirty-six hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by finance committee, thirty-six hundred dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, four thousand, two hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, four thousand, two hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, four thousand, two hundred dollars. Department number one seventy-one, Conservation Commission, current fiscal year, zero. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, five thousand dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, five thousand dollars. Expenses, current fiscal year, one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. And fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by finance committee, one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, one thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, six thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the finance committee, six thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Department number one seventy-five, the Planning Board, Personnel Expenses, current fiscal year, forty-two thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars, forty-five cents. dollars, forty-five cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, forty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars, forty-six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, forty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars, forty-six cents. Expenses for the current fiscal year, nine thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars, sixty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars, sixty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, eight thousand, seven hundred and four dollars, sixty cents. Total appropriation for the current fiscal year, fifty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars, five cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, fifty-two thousand, four hundred ninety dollars, six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, fifty-two thousand, four hundred ninety dollars, six cents. Department number one seventy-six, Board of Appeals. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, thirty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, fifty-eight thousand, fifteen dollars and eighty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars, thirty-six cents. Expenses for the current fiscal year, nine thousand, eight hundred sixty-six dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, twenty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. Total appropriation for the current fiscal year, thirty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars, thirty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, eighty-two thousand, six hundred seventy dollars and eighty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, fifty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-six dollars and thirty-six cents. Department number one eighty-nine, Development and Industrial Commission. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, zero. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, zero. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, zero. Expenses for the current fiscal year, zero. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one thousand dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, one thousand dollars. Total appropriation for the current fiscal year, zero. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one thousand dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, one thousand dollars. Department number one nine-two, Public Buildings and Properties Maintenance. Expenses, current fiscal year, eighty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, eighty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, eighty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. Total appropriation for the current fiscal year, eighty-five thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, eighty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars. Department number one ninety-three, Building Insurance. Expenses for the current fiscal year, forty thousand dollars. For the fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, forty-three thousand dollars. The fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, forty-three thousand dollars. Total appropriation for the current fiscal year was forty thousand dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, forty-three thousand dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, forty-three thousand dollars. Department number one ninety-five, Town Reports. Expenses for current fiscal year, twenty-five hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, twenty-five hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, twenty-five hundred dollars. Total appropriation for the current fiscal year, twenty-five hundred dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, twenty-five hundred dollars. And the fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, twenty-five thousand dollars. The totals for General Government for the current fiscal year, one million, two hundred...
Twenty-five hundred, not twenty-five thousand. The one just above. They're all running together.
Fiscal year, let me retract that. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, as a total appropriation for expenses of Town Reports is tw- twenty-five hundred dollars. I almost did it again. For grand total of total general government for the current fiscal year, one million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and thirty cents. The fiscal year two thousand seventeen request is one million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars, seventy-nine cents. The fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, one million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, ninety-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. Going into Public Safety, Department number two-ten, The Police Department. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, one million, one hundred four thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars, seventy-six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one million, one hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred ten dollars and thirty-four cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, one million, one hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred ten dollars, thirty-four cents. Expenses for the current fiscal year, one hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-five dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, one hundred sixty-two thousand, two- eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Total appropriation for the current fiscal year, one million, two hundred sixty-eight thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars, seventy-six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one million, three hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars, thirty-four cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, one million, three hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars, thirty-four cents. Department number two fifteen, The Communications Department. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, two hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars, fifty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, three hundred and five thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars, fifty-eight cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, three hundred and two thousand, one hundred eighty dollars, sixty cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, two- twenty thousand, fifty-five dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, twenty thousand, three hundred five dollars. And the fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, twenty thousand, three hundred five dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, two hundred seventy-five thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars, fifty cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, three hundred twenty-six thousand, twenty-five dollars, fifty-eight cents. And fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, three hundred twenty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars, sixty cents. Department number two twenty, Fire Department. Current fiscal year, seven hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred sixty-four dollars, seventy-nine cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred sixty-four dollars, seventy-nine cents. Expenses for the current fiscal year, one hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, one hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, one hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars. For total appropriation of the current fiscal year, nine hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, six hundred nine thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars, seventy-nine cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, six hundred nine thousand, eight hundred forty-nine dollars, seventy-nine cents.
Okay, I'll pick up the next one. Department number two hundred and thirty-one, Ambulance Services. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, hundred seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. FY seventeen request, five hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, five hundred thirteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. FY seventeen rec- request, hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-five dollars. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. For a total appropriation of three hundred and one thousand, for the current fiscal year, three hundred and one thousand, three hundred twenty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. FY seventeen request, six hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, six hundred sixty-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Ambulance Fund, Raise and Appropriate, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And from the ambulance fund, four hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Excuse me. Department two forty-one, Building Inspection. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, hundred and four thousand, five dollars. Request FY seventeen, hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Finance Committee recommended for FY seventeen, hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. Expenses, current fiscal year, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. FY seventeen request, forty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, forty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. For total appropriation of current fiscal year, hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. FY seventeen request, hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Department two forty-two, Gas Inspection. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, six thousand dollars. Fiscal year seventeen, request, seven thousand. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, seven thousand. Total appropriation, current year, six thousand. Requested FY seventeen, seven thousand. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, seven thousand. Department two hundred and forty-three, Plumbing Inspection. Personnel expenses, FY sixteen, current fiscal year, six thousand dollars. Requested FY seventeen, seven thousand. And Finance Committee recommendation, FY seventeen, seven thousand. Expenses, current fiscal year, two hundred dollars. Nothing was requested in FY seventeen, and there is no recommendation for funding in FY seventeen by the Finance Committee. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, six thousand, two hundred dollars. FY seventeen request, seven thousand. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, seven thousand. Department two forty-four, Waits and Measures. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, one thousand, one hundred eight dollars, twenty-five cents. FY seventeen request, one thousand, one hundred thirty dollars and forty-two cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, one thousand, one hundred thirty dollars and forty-two cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, three hundred and forty-five dollars. FY seventeen request, three hundred and seventy dollars. FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendations, fifteen- uh, excuse me, three hundred and seventy dollars. For total appropriation, current fiscal year, one thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. FY seventeen request, one thousand, five hundred dollars and forty-two cents. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, one thousand, five hundred dollars and forty-two cents. Department two forty-five, Electrical Inspection. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, twelve thousand dollars. FY eight- excuse me, FY seventeen request, eighteen thousand dollars. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, eighteen thousand. For total appropriation, this year, twelve thousand. FY seventeen request, eighteen thousand. And the Finance Committee recommendation, FY seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars. Department two ninety-two, The Animal Control Office. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, sixteen thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars, forty-eight cents. Requested for FY seventeen, sixteen thousand, five hundred sixty dollars and sixty cents. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, sixteen thousand, five hundred sixty dollars and sixty cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. FY seventeen request, eighty-five hundred dollars. FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, eighty-five hundred dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, twenty-four thousand, nine eighty-six point forty-eight. FY seventeen request, twenty-five thousand, sixty dollars and sixty cents. Finance Committee FY seventeen recommendation, twenty-five thousand, sixty dollars and sixty cents. Two hundred ninety-four, Department two ninety-four, Forestry. Personnel expenses, current year, four hundred twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents. FY seventeen request, four hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, four hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty cents. For total appropriation of, current fiscal year, four hundred and twenty-three dollars, fourteen cents. FY seventeen request, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty cents. FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, four hundred and thirty-one thousand- excuse me, four hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty cents.
Wow.
Yes.
What a raise.
What a raise. Tommy will be happy. Department two hundred ninety-five, Harbor Master. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, zero. FY seventeen request, three thousand dollars. FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, two thousand dollars. Expenses, current fiscal year, four thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. FY seventeen request, five thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. And the Finance Committee recommendation for FY seventeen is five thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. For total appropriation, current fiscal year, four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, and of which, four hundred and fifty dollars came from the revolving account attached to the Harbor Masters Department. Fiscal year request, two thousand seventeen total, eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. Department two ninety-nine, The Disaster Committee. Expenses, current fiscal year, five thousand dollars. FY two thousand seventeen request, forty-five hundred dollars. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, forty-five hundred dollars. For total appropriation, for the current fiscal year, five thousand dollars. Requested FY seventeen, forty-five hundred dollars. And the FinCom recommendation for FY seventeen of forty-five hundred dollars. So, the total public safety section of the budget. Current fiscal year is two million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. The fiscal year two thousand seventeen request total, three million, one hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars and twelve cents. FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, three million, one hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars and fourteen cents. Education, three- Department three hundred. Education expenses, five, six, nine, zero. Dietrich Regional School District. Current fiscal year, this is broken down, operating budget, eight million, three hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars. FY seventeen request, eight million, seven hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. seventy-eight dollars. And the Finance Committee recommendation, eight million, seven hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. DR capital, current fiscal year, three hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. FY seventeen request, three hundred fifty thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars. And FY seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. So, the total DR appropriation, capital and operating, for the current year is eight million, seven hundred five thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. The requested amount for FY seventeen is nine million, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation is nine thousand, seventy, excuse me, nine million, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Expenses, fifty-six ninety-one. This is Bristol County Agricultural School. And the current fiscal year for the Aggie School is fifty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-three. The request for FY seventeen is fifty-five thousand, five ninety-three. And the recommendation for FY seventeen from the Finance Committee is fifty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars. Expenses, Bristol Plymouth, account five, six, nine, two. This year's current total for BP is three hundred fifteen thousand, eighty-eight dollars. The request for FY seventeen is three hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars. And the Finance Committee FY seventeen recommendation is three hundred fifty-three thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. The total education budget for current fiscal year is nine million, seventy-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-two dollars. The request for FY seventeen is nine million, four hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And the Finance Committee recommendation for FY seventeen is nine million, four hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Highway Department, number four, two, two. Highway construction and maintenance personnel expenses, four, current fiscal year, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and two dollars and six cents. Requested FY seventeen, five hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-six cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, five hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, hundred fifty thousand, five hundred dollars. Requested FY seventeen, hundred fifty thousand, five hundred dollars. FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, hundred fifty thousand, five hundred dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, six hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and six cents. FY seventeen request, six eighty-six, seven seven four point six six. And the Finance Committee recommendation for FY seventeen is six hundred eighty-six thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-six cents. Department four hundred and twenty-three, Snow and Ice Control. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, thirteen thousand dollars. Requested FY seventeen, thirteen thousand dollars. Finance Committee recommendation, FY seventeen, thirteen thousand. Expenses, current year request of thirty-seven thousand, excuse me, current year budget, thirty-seven thousand. FY seventeen request, thirty-seven thousand. And the Finance Committee recommendation FY seventeen is thirty-seven thousand dollars. Total appropriation, current budget, fifty thousand dollars. Requested FY seventeen, fifty thousand dollars. Finance Committee recommendation, FY seventeen, fifty thousand dollars. Department four hundred twenty-nine, the Dyton-Berkeley Bridge expense. Current fiscal year, a hundred and fifty dollars. FY seventeen request, eighteen hundred dollars. And the Finance Committee recommendation for FY two oh one seven is eighteen hundred Department four thirty-two, Street Cleaning slash Stormwater. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, zero. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. FY seventeen recommendation, Finance Committee, twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, zero. Fiscal year two oh one seven request, sixty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, sixty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. Total appropriation for Street Cleaning slash Stormwater, current fiscal year, zero. Fiscal year two oh one seven request, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and eighteen cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and eighteen cents. The total Highway Department, current fiscal year, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and six cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen request, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. The Finance Committee FY seventeen recommendation, eight hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Sanitation, Department four thirty-three, Waste Collection and Disposal. Personnel expenses, current fiscal year, six thousand, six hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. Fiscal year two thousand seventeen, request, seven thousand. And the Finance Committee FY seventeen recommendation is seven thousand dollars. Expenses, current fiscal year, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eighty-seven dollars and ten cents. The FY seventeen request, four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, four hundred sixty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents. Total appropriation for Waste Collection and Disposal, current fiscal year, four hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and thirty-three cents. FY seventeen request, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, four hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents. The total sanitation budget, current fiscal year, four hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars and thirty-three cents. FY seventeen request, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-eight cents. Other environmental, four, Department four ninety-one, cemeteries. The expenses, current fiscal year, thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Request FY seventeen, thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Finance Committee recommendation FY seventeen, thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Total other environmental, human services, current fiscal year, thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. FY seventeen request, thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Department five hundred and ten, Human Services. Board of Health, Regulations and Inspections, personnel expenses, current fiscal year, twenty thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents. FY seventeen request, twenty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, twenty-one thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, twelve thousand dollars. Requested FY seventeen, sixteen thousand dollars. And FY seventeen FinCom recommendation, sixteen thousand dollars. Total appropriation, this year, thirty-two thousand, six hundred seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents. FY seventeen request, thirty-seven thousand, one hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. And the Finance Committee recommendation FY seventeen is thirty-seven thousand, one ninety-three point sixty-seven. Department five nineteen, Board of Health Administration, personnel expenses, current fiscal year, sixteen thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-two cents. FY seventeen request, fifty-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars and forty-eight cents. And, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, FY seventeen fiscal year, Finance Committee recommendation, eighteen thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, six thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. FY seventeen request, six thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, six thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars for a total appropriation of, current fiscal year, twenty-two thousand, eight sixty-two point fifty-two. Fiscal year two oh one seven request, fifty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. And the Finance Committee recommendation for FY seventeen is twenty-five thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents. Department five forty-one, Council on Aging, personnel expenses, current fiscal year, ninety-three thousand, sixteen dollars and sixty cents. FY seventeen request, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred twelve dollars and fifty-seven cents. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-seven cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. FY seventeen request, eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. The Finance Committee FY seventeen request is eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. For total appropriation of, current fiscal year, a hundred and nine thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and sixty cents. FY seventeen request, hundred thirteen thousand, sixty dollars and fifty-seven cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, hundred thirteen thousand, sixty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Department five forty-three, Veteran Services, Personnel Services, current fiscal year, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. FY seventeen request, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. And FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. Expenses, current fiscal year, ninety-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. FY seventeen request, ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, a hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars and thirty-two cents. FY seventeen request, a hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars, ninety-seven cents. And the Finance Committee FY seventeen recommendation, hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and ninety-seven cents. Total Human Services, current fiscal year, three hundred thousand, five hundred seventy dollars and sixty-three cents. FY seventeen request, three hundred forty-seven thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, three hundred thirteen thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Culture and Recreation, Department six ten, Public Library, personnel expenses, current year, one six, one hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars. FY seventeen request, a hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, a hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars. Expenses, current fiscal year, sixty-four thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars. FY seventeen request, seventy thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars. And FY seventeen FinCom recommendation, seventy thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars. Total appropriation, current fiscal year, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, forty-three dollars. FY seventeen request, two hundred forty-four thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. And the FY seventeen FinCom recommendation, two hundred forty-four thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. Department six hundred and thirty, Parks and Recreation, personnel expenses, the, the current fiscal year, the request for FY seventeen and the recommendations, all zeros. Expenses, current fiscal year, sixteen thousand. Requesting FY seventeen, twenty-one thousand. And the Finance Committee recommendation is twenty-one thousand. So, the total appropriation this year, sixteen thousand. The request for next year is twenty-one thousand. And the FinCom recommendation FY seventeen is twenty-one thousand. Department six hundred ninety, Town Historian, expenses, current fiscal year, two hundred and fifty dollars. FY seventeen request, two hundred and fifty dollars. And the FY seventeen FinCom recommendation is two hundred and fifty dollars. So, the total appropriation this year, two hundred and fifty. The request for FY seventeen, two fifty. And the recommendation from the FinCom, two hundred and fifty. Department six hundred ninety-one, the Historical Commission, expenses, current budget, FY, excuse me, fifteen hundred dollars. FY seventeen request, fifteen hundred dollars. And the FinCom FY seventeen recommendation is fifteen hundred. So, the total appropriation this year, fifteen hundred. The request for FY seventeen, fifteen hundred. And the FinCom recommendation FY seventeen is fifteen hundred. Department six hundred ninety-eight, Cable Commission, personnel expenses, current budget, zero. FY seventeen request, eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Finance Committee FY seventeen recommendation, eighty-five hundred dollars. Expenses, current budget, zero. FY seventeen request, twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the FY seventeen FinCom recommendation, twenty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Total appropriation, current budget, zero. FY seventeen request, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. The FY seventeen FinCom recommendation is twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And funding for this is through the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. Total Culture and Recreation, current year budget, two hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars. FY seventeen request, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, eighty-two dollars. And the FinCom FY seventeen request, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, eighty-two dollars. Debt Service, seven hundred, Department seven ten, Maturing Principle on Long-Term Debt Expenses, current fiscal year, this is the Title V account, ten thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars. Requested FY seventeen, a hundred and seventy-six thousand, eighty-five dollars. And the FinCom request FY seventeen, a hundred and seventy-six thousand, eighty-five dollars. So, the total appropriation, current year, Title V, ten thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars. The request FY seventeen, a hundred and seventy-six thousand, eighty-five dollars. And the FY seventeen FinCom recommendation, a hundred and seventy-six thousand, eighty-five dollars. And again, ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, this is the Title V account. Department seven hundred fifty-one, Interest on Long-Term Debt Expenses, current fiscal year, zero. FY seventeen request, forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-two cents. And the Finance Committee recommendation FY seventeen is forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and twenty-two cents for total appropriation. For total debt service is, current fiscal year, ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. FY seventeen request, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. And the FY seventeen Finance Committee recommendation is twenty, two hundred twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-two cents. Employee Benefits, Department nine eleven, Retirement and Pension Contributions, expenses, current fiscal year, six hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars. Fiscal two thousand seventeen request, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, forty-four dollars. And the FY seventeen recommendation by the Finance Committee is seven hundred twenty-five thousand, forty-four dollars. Total appropriation this year, six hundred sixty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars. FY seventeen request, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, forty-four dollars. And the Finance Committee recommendation, FY seventeen, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, forty-four dollars. Department nine twelve, Workers' Compensation Insurance, expenses, current fiscal year, twenty-nine thousand dollars. FY seventeen request, forty-five thousand. And the fiscal year two thousand seventeen Finance Committee recommendation, forty-five thousand. For total appropriation this year, twenty-nine thousand. Request FY seventeen, forty-five thousand. And FinCom recommendation FY seventeen, forty-five thousand dollars. Department nine fourteen, Group Health Insurance Expenses, current fiscal year, seven hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred sixty-six dollars and nine cents. FY seventeen request, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars, eighty-two cents. And the FY seventeen FinCom recommendation, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars, eighty-two cents. Total appropriation, current year, seven hundred thirty thousand, nine hundred sixty-six oh nine. FY seventeen request, seven hundred forty-nine thousand, one hundred sixty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. And the FY seventeen FinCom recommendation is seven hundred forty-nine thousand, one sixty-one point eighty-two. Department nine fifteen, Group Life Insurance Expenses, I should just be reading these ones. There's only one expense line, so the total appropriation and the expense line, for the current fiscal year, is seven hundred current fiscal year, is seven hundred dollars. Expenses requested is, for FY seventeen, seven hundred dollars. And the finance committee recommendation, recommendation for FY seventeen is seven hundred dollars. Nine hundred, Department nine sixteen, employer contributions. Again, expenses, this is a one-line item, so the